You ready?
All right, someone make a motion for us to reconvene our meeting we started last night.
I'll make motion that we reconvene from revision and session of March.
Thank you, Randy. Second. Thank you, James. On favor.
Okay.
Hello, Seth.
Yes, sir.
All right, so last night we talked a little bit about some projects that we've been working on. Some development updates, and there were a couple of questions that came out of that conversation that I wanted to touch on. First one, before we get into more project updates, there were questions about the tax revenue and what that might look like for the town. So last night I put this table together and what this shows is on the, on the left column here. Right here, this F Y twenty-three, cycle twenty-two, those are the, those are the billing amounts for the current year that we're in. So when people got their bills last summer, that's the, that's what it was equal to. So the, the numbers in the, in the column projected value to twenty-twenty-two is actually two twenty-twenty-three. I just put the wrong number in there. Those are the values that we got back in February. So you can see that there's a, there's a increase in every category except, or excuse me, decrease rather, in all categories except for real property. So what does this mean in terms of our tax revenue? Give me one second and I'll show you complicated spreadsheet. All right, so here are those same values again in the spreadsheet form. And again, this is, this is from the current year that we're in right now. This is the proposed, these are the values as of February twentieth. Now again, I said this again, but I'll, I'll, excuse me, I said this before, but I'll say it again. These values are updated every month. So typically February, March, April, May, we get updated values. And the last few years, we've been, I think I've been using March's values to develop the budget because the budget is presented in, in May. So at some point we have to stick with a number for our calculations and go with it. So you can see an overall increase of thirty-one point two-five percent. What this means in terms of tax revenue is this next, is this next table down here. So you can see property minus motor vehicle tax. So motor vehicle tax, this N C D M V net collections is nearly a hundred percent every year because that's when you pay for your tag, you pay your taxes as well. So we just, we assume that that's a hundred percent. So I don't take it into account for this calculation. It's, it's accounted for, but later on in the budget, so we just plug that back into that line item in the, in the spreadsheet. So property minus motor vehicle taxes for the current year, you can see that with the full nineteen cent tax rate. That's what the, if you do that, that is the balance of property, real property minus motor vehicle is that number. And then in order to figure out the tax revenue off that, you divide it by a hundred and then you multiply it by your nineteen cent tax rate. Again, this is the full tax rate, which includes the eleven cents for the fire department and eight cents for the town. And then last year we assumed ninety-eight percent collections. So it's roughly two point eight million is the, is the projected revenue from, from the actual numbers last year. Now you hear us talk about one penny, like what does one penny of tax rate equal to? Off the current year numbers, it's approximately a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So let's pretend it's not a reevaluation year and you raise taxes by a penny, you bring in a hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. But again, we have to start on a percent taxes, so it's really closer to a hundred and fifty thousand. And then this is how much money, three quarters of a penny is going towards each of the capital reserve accounts for parks and then for the town hall, which is the one fourteen, seven twenty-five. And then of course going with ninety-eight percent collections, ultimately what you end up with is just shy of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Those are current year numbers. So what does it mean with the increased value? Well, that's this next spreadsheet right here. So this is your real property minus your motor vehicle taxes, gives you this total right here. And then you divide that by a hundred and you end up with this number right here. When you multiply that by your existing tax rate of nineteen cents, again, that's fire and town, it's three point eight million dollars. So it went from two point nine to three point eight. Again, assuming ninety-eight percent collection, it's just under that. And then your penny of a tax rate. Nothing changes. It would be two oh five, one twenty or two oh one after ninety-eight percent collection. And then your capital reserve accounts would increase equally for a total of three hundred and seven thousand dollars. What does this actually mean? So if we did not change the tax rate and looked at just the town's eight cents, that was the value from last year, I should say current year. And then the proposed values for this year is one point six. That's a difference of four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. What that means is if you don't change the tax rate, leave it at eight cents with the projections that we have, have as of February, you'd bring in an additional four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in tax revenue just for the town. And then of course the same calculation for the fire department. And that's the overall increase, town wide at ninety-eight percent. So this increase right here, this four hundred and seventeen thousand, two twenty-one is roughly equivalent to two and three quarters of a penny. So yeah, let's pretend there wasn't a revaluation year and all things stayed the same. It would be like raising taxes by two and three quarters of a penny, the additional revenue you bring in. So that is, that, those are the rough numbers calculated based off of the February projections. Again, those numbers will be refined as we get closer, but I wanted to give you some sense of what it would look like if all things stayed the same. What you would see in terms of additional revenue. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions about that?
You have to change it like it's nineteen cents. Can you change it to eighteen point seven five?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be whole numbers. You can, you can do, most people do half, like, you know, eighteen and a half or whatever, but it could be eighteen and a quarter. Doesn't have to be a whole number.
So the county sets the rate for the fire departments or they have to approve what the fire department. So have you gotten any feedback from the county about what they might do with their, with that? Do you expect any feedback or are you, are we gonna getting any advance warning about what they're gonna do with their rate versus what they might not do with the rate, the county and the fire department?
Well, the fire department, we're gonna have them come and speak to you guys in April as part of the, the normal budgeting process. I don't know the schedule for the county of when they're actually gonna set their rates. But I'm happy to reach out to them and see if we can get that information sooner rather than later.
So the fire department just requests and then they look at it and, and they allow the tax for the rate at eleven cents or?
Yeah, the county, the county sets that rate. And then as far as the tax office is concerned, the, the property tax rate in Mills River is nineteen cents. Ultimately, that's what we collect. And then that works out to approximately fifty-eight percent for the fire department. And then the other forty-two comes to the town. To answer your question though, we don't have any idea where that's gonna go yet.
So to put us back in the same spot we were in this fiscal year, you're saying, and if the values don't change much, two point seven five cents per hundred evaluation.
You have any questions on this?
You don't, did you figure up the, you said two and three quarter would be? If there wasn't revaluation, we'd realize tax increase. That's just the town share. Do you have the figure for the whole nineteen cents, what it would be?
I don't.
And, and a penny, I mean, the five seventy-three plus four seventeen, what that equates to and?
That would be that.
Almost a million dollars.
But I was just wondering how much of a, what kind of increase would nine hundred and ninety thousand be as, as a tax rate? We went from nineteen to twenty-three cents or something like that to get to nine ninety, if you understand. You told us that if we did nothing, basically the town would be raising their taxes two point seven five cents. And I just thought, well, that's just the town. That's not the fire department's, nearly six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I just wondered, is that it? If you're a homeowner or property owner? If we do nothing, are they realizing a six percent increase, six cent increase in tax, seven cents? Or what is those two numbers combined?
If I can figure out how I did this math.
I think, so a penny was how much in the dollar line, two hundred and one?
Should be, should be a million five to about six or five, I guess. It doesn't stand to reason because the fire department's more than half. They're eleven of the nineteen.
So I think if I think if I'm understanding your question, it's equivalent to a five point five percent tax increase. Is this number right here?
That's the town portion.
That's the fire.
And that would be about five eight. No, that's too close. Two point seven nine, two point seven two, that's almost.
Well, it's five point five two. Yeah.
It comes out to about four, four and three quarters cents.
Total.
On the hundred. For the both of them.
You know, and we're in a unique situation too, sitting right here is because all these houses at the Crowson, that farm, the townhouses, it's gonna be finished on Jeffers Road before January one. C O, we're gonna pick all those up also that we're not accounting for. You know?
That will be in next year's budget though.
Yes. Yes, but I'm just saying or commenting.
Yes, and Mills River Crossing has plans for another development on the south end of town. But that's very preliminary at this point. So there's, there's new projects planned. And of course, when the legacy comes online, that will be another large, another large one.
But when you have to publish the equal rate, it's gonna be in that four to five.
It will, it will be down four or five cents from our current one. So fourteen and a half, fifteen cents approximately is where we'll probably end up.
But that will be reflected in the fire department's portion also.
Which made things a little bit muddy for you guys because the town still has to have a certain amount of revenue to operate. And the fire department's rate is, is set by the county. And so when you look at the revenue initial rate, if you were just to adopt that, you would be cutting the town's revenue significantly. Because you, you would effectively, let's just say it's fourteen and a half and the department, fire department stays the same at eleven. When the town's tax rate is, is, we're only bringing in three and a half cents worth of revenue off of that same amount of property.
But the fire department doesn't have to do that math and also and at least acknowledge that they're. No, they get a raise no matter what.
It's gonna be, I'm gonna be shocked if they don't get an increase with the new building and everything else that's going on, probably spring.
Don't think, I don't know this for a fact, but I don't think the county will let them keep the same rate. I could be wrong, but I don't.
I could at least share with you only because I sit on the board with Commissioner Lapsley, but he was telling the Board of Health just a week and a half ago that to rest assured, the commissioners were gonna modify the tax rate. You know, he can't commit to more being on that. But, and to your point, Randy, I think they're in the same boat, just not to the same degree we are that they cut the county's tax rate and leave the departments unchanged and all the departments get a raise and the county's gonna have to offset, basically subsidize that raise by having less revenue. And so I think they'll have to do something. What they do, we don't have any idea.
I don't know that it'll be complete neutrally, what we're talking about from this past year. But I don't think it'll be, I don't think they'll let it stand where it's at now. I think it will.
I don't think they'll adjust it revenue neutral, but they'll, they'll have to cut it otherwise. Kind of commissioner will be just like us. They'll be cutting services to divert money, more money to fire departments, which either it's neutral or everybody gets a bump in revenue.
So we don't have a date on when we might know these numbers from the county?
No, no, but I can reach out to the manager and see what their schedule looks like.
But I'll mention now while we're on topic that I would like to see the town approach the fire department about modifying the contract that expires next year, the current contract. And get away from this tax rate. And just like sheriff's department, what does it cost for you to operate and serve the town of Mills River? If it's a million dollars, two million dollars, three million dollars, but we need to enter into a contract with a fixed rate or at least some sort of graduated scale, but we can't be, it's out of our hands when kind of reevaluates and the county sets the fire district rate. I mean, they can still collect what they get from the commissioners and the unincorporated parts of the town. But we need to contract their services just like we do the sheriff's department. And that's based on what it costs to furnish the services and, and our contract with them needs to be, you know, it's just like this past year, we were blessed with increased revenues and we're doing budget amendments all the time and sending more money to fire department because they were the benefactor, just like the town of Mills River is for additional taxes. But to me, that's no way to operate to keep saying, well, we protect, it's gonna be one point six million dollars and then we paid them one point nine million, you know? And then next year they might get two point four or this coming year I might get two point four million dollars and you just can't budget with. If we're gonna do a contract with them, it needs to be for the actual cost of the services, not just the tax rate that we have no influence over. Or tax rate, yeah, their fire rate.
Well, I've always liked the both of Jeff is that money that we collect is theirs. And we don't even have to worry about it. That's set by the county. And we can set base our tax rate on what we need as a town. I do a lot of work for the fire departments and I don't know, I honestly don't know how they make it on what they make it on sometimes, as much as trucks and stuff cost. But we even, you know, to ask for a contract, I don't know, without, you know, the county support from them, I don't know what kind of number you'd get. It might be scary. I know they get their unincorporated money, but it would, it would surprise you what it might, what it might look like ten years from now versus today's money.
But it forces them protection too. If the revaluations come and real estate market crashes, they still need to get what it takes to operate there. They still need what it takes to operate. And I'll say two million dollars a year, if that's what it takes to operate. That's all they should be interested in and they shouldn't have to worry about when is the county do revaluations and is the real estate market up, real estate market down, they still gotta protect and provide services to the town. So that's why I say, you know, everybody else in the world has a budget. And they have to follow that budget and they know what their needs are and they project what their future needs are gonna be. But this having to revisit it every time we do tax collections and receive and say, well, you're actually gonna get more money now, you know, you're gonna get more money. And then now here we are, we're looking at a tax increase if we don't modify the tax rate. But if we modify tax rate to make it something close to neutral, then as the town manager point out, town Mills River is gonna lose money. We're gonna actually bring in less money next year or this, yeah, the next fiscal year than we did this current year. While taxes are basically the same or going up for everybody else. And why, why is our revenues going down? It's because it's being redirected to the fire department because they're, they're stuck at that eleven percent or that, you know, tax rate of eleven cents. And that's just not. Everybody should want to fix their cost and fix their numbers because you can't plan, you can't manage things that you can't put a number on. So I just say that the county's gonna be the same shape. And I, I will, I feel confident the county, if they are, as Commissioner Lapsley alluded to, they're gonna change the tax rate, lessen the impact on property owners, then they'll have to go to the fire departments because they're not gonna cut county revenues while letting all the fire departments get additional revenues. I mean, everybody's gonna come out ahead, but they're not gonna let fire departments get a lion's share and then the rest of the county go in arrears because of the way it's laid out. They'll have to tweak them. I say everybody's gonna come out ahead. I feel confident of that.
I guess my thoughts are, and I get what you're saying, Jeff, but I guess we're kind of in a u- unique situation because we don't really have any control over what the fire department does because it's not an entity of the town. There's a, the town needs fire department more than the fire department needs the town. They can have, I mean, if they, if we parted ways with the fire department and the town didn't collect their money, they would still be in business. They would just let the county collect their tax revenue. So we, I guess what I'm saying is we, we're kinda trying to negotiate. If we do it that way, we're trying to negotiate from a position of weakness because the fire department's here well before the town and they don't really need the town to operate and do what they do.
But I may be wrong. I don't know that they would collect taxes within the incorporated Mills River.
I don't, either asking if the county would collect taxes within.
I'm just saying that to Randy's point of if we parted ways, I don't think we'd still be writing one point six million dollar checks to the fire department.
We would, but they would still get their tax dollars. They could, they could contract with the county to collect their tax revenue, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure that any other jurisdictions, Hendersonville has their own department, but I don't know that Flat Rock collects taxes. I believe the county collects all the fire taxes, right?
Flat Rock does contract with fire departments. They work with three different departments.
Do they collect their taxes on their behalf?
It's my understanding.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's what collecting the taxes for Mills River, Mills River Fire is what allows us.
The county does.
But if it was in a contract form, it would work also as a service.
Yeah.
But I think, I think what, I guess what I'm thinking is we, we have very little influence over what we can pressure fire department to do as far as contractually. Because I think you're going, I mean, they.
My big, you know, my biggest fear is, you know, I'm seven foot, so I think outside the box, I guess sometimes, but and ninety-eight percent is a great number for collection. But we're talking about, you know, if they take a downturn in the economy or something and we're under a contract basis to produce one point five million or two point five million dollars or whatever the number is. And we're not collecting but eighty percent, that affects us big time. If we only collect eighty now, they only get eighty percent. You know, I don't know that in our lifetime we'll ever see it, but we're gonna see that again. It's gonna go another curve.
Mills River's collections have never been below ninety-five percent, even in our first year. And in two thousand eight, when the tax dropped, we were still at ninety-eight percent.
I guess are, do they base it off of the tax rate? You were saying that you didn't want, they shouldn't be worried about the economy going up or down. Was that, so that way that's naturally, it naturally helps them. Mills River's growing, so they're getting more money from the increased tax to buy the bigger truck. Like, is that a, another way to?
Well, I, I have problems just because I keep saying that I think the sheriff's department is a, is a comparable. And law enforcement and their protection shouldn't be based on what property values are or what the economy is doing. We want the same protection no matter what. And so what we get from the sheriff every year is this is the cost for our services. And it continues to go up, which we all understand that. And that, and that's why I don't understand about the fire protection. And maybe I misunderstand the whole tax thing that, say if we said we want a Mills River Fire Department and we're gonna hire full-time firefighters, we're gonna build a firehouse right next to town hall, that the county would still collect eleven cents in the side of our town boundaries on behalf of the Mills River Fire District, even though it's being served by a city fire department, but.
They would.
I don't, I don't know. I, I, I just assume they wouldn't. That the county wouldn't come in here, they still collect the county tax, but they wouldn't collect Mills River's fire department. Because it's being met by a city service and so the county's gonna collect their taxes no matter what, but they're not gonna say, hey, we need to collect Mills River because they're not providing services in our town, you know, so I don't think it's a, you know, I don't know that parting ways is a nuclear option for both parties. I think if it did come to that, I don't, at least my understanding is I didn't think the county would come in and say, well, Mills River's not collecting fire district money anymore in the town of Mills River, so we'll do it and give it to you, even though you're not doing anything in the town of Mills River. They have their own fire department, I think. And maybe Sharon or somebody else can clarify that, or maybe I'm just off base, but it just seems to me that if the county's always gonna collect their taxes, but I don't know, they're gonna turn around and ask for eleven more cents from people who live within town limits if we have our own fire department. So I think it's, they need us as much as we need them. I just thought that this fire or the law enforcement and fire should look the same and be the same in terms of how we treat them in the contract. And this whole tying it to taxes is just the, the Mills River is gonna be on the losing end or always gonna be fighting these battles of, you know, this moving target of what, what's their services costing this year? Is it more? Is it, how is it changing throughout the year?
I don't need to worry about what they're doing. I'll be honest with you. They present a budget, they do their own thing, we collect their revenues. Sue and them turn it over to them. I take care of less what they're doing. They're providing us a service. As long as we're happy with the service inside the town, it's like sheriff's. As long as they're committed, I wouldn't mind to have the sheriff's contract tied to a tax rate. Then it would be easier for me to explain to the citizens of Mills River. That's how it worked and, and the reason important.
So you know why they're different?
Yeah, just because when we first incorporated, that's how it was set up with the fire department. The county would set a rate for suing them to collect. We would collect if we would turn over whatever percentage we got to them, nothing more. And then, but the county just started out, you know, with, with this sheriff's department. We did this simple little contract, one person, them providing us a vehicle and all, you know, and it's grown to what it is. But in my way of thinking, as these evaluations grow, it gives, it would give those two organisms. it gives, it will give those two organizations a chance to grow and live. Even though we could drop our tax rate by eight cents, but we couldn't, we couldn't adjust theirs unless they adjusted at a county level. Then it would keep the contracts. We wouldn't even have to deal in fact. You don't realize what these contracts are going to be till you get into them. If you go to trying to really hack at them things, as Daniel can tell you, it's, it's a nightmare. If we just had a simple tax rate to collect, it is what it is. They do their thing, we do ours. Everybody's happy. But I have fought more wars over the sheriff's contract over the years than I have anything here. And I, and I don't like them. We're all friends. I don't like it at all. You know, if it was tied to a tax rate that, that the county felt that they could support that system along, then we just collect it and hand it over. I'd hate to draw that one for the fire department like we've got with the sheriff's contract because all it does is just drive wedges. I mean, it just drives wedges. And if we're fighting for every dollar we can keep and they're needing every dollar they can get. I mean, it's just that simple. It's just common thing.
I believe with fire department contract in there, it says that we're supposed to have a liaison from the fire department that communicates with the town. And I don't believe we have that, do we?
I mean, Rick, you know, you can call Rick anytime and he'll tell you what he knows and what you're trying to ask for. He'll find out.
Right. Well, I mean, if they would come and communicate with us their wants and needs and, you know, what they have, then we have something to go on. Otherwise, we just sit here and get no information.
But see, but see, I look at it totally different than that. It's no interest. I don't run that department. It's not, it's not nothing that our staff controls.
It's not a matter of wanting to run the department. It's wanting to know what their, what their needs are, where their expenditures go to. And, you know, what can we do?
But we could.
To help.
How wrong in saying we couldn't control that even if we knew.
Because they have their own board of directors. They're, they're their own entity, is what I'm saying.
Not even at a county basis. They're their own entity. You know, we don't control them in no form or fashion.
Just like any of the other valley fire departments in Henderson County, they're their own entity. They have their own board of directors and everything. All we're doing is contracting a service from them.
Yeah, we could beg them to buy a different colored truck, but they, they wouldn't be obligated in no way to do it, you know, we control in no way. It's, it's different than I think a lot of, you might imagine it. We just don't, we have no control. They're their own thing.
I understand they're their own thing, but I think if we work together in aspects, then it helps build bridges and helps people understand each other better.
Maybe, or tells them more closer than that, but I don't know. I don't know. I'd just like to see them do their own thing. I mean, I don't know, I don't know enough about the lead them in any direction.
Not wanting to lead, build bridges for communication or working relationship, town relationship, community relationship. If they're their own entity and they sit over here and do their own thing and all we do is chunk money into the project. I mean, it's a, it's a one-way process.
No, and Shannon, I'm sorry.
I mean, go ahead.
I think where, where you and I really disagree is that I see the 19 cents is that's Mills River tax. That is every penny that comes with this town through that tax collection, that rate accountable for it. And, and you see it, when you get your tax bill, you're seeing a Mills River tax bill and a fire department tax bill.
The county for it because I am by law obligated to release that 11.
Well, yes, but.
As I get it.
But it's a service. It's, we, we entered in this contract willingly, as did the fire department, to provide us a service. And we're collecting the tax because it's service we provide, just as we do with the sheriff's department. But when I see a 19 cents tax rate, I see that as a Mills River tax rate. I don't see that Mills River and the fire department. Now this, that's what makes it up. But if it goes up or down, we're raising or lowering the Mills River tax rate and, and like I said, we're, our hands are tied on all these things, but the numbers up there. You know, we've paid 1.6 this year for the, the services and, you know, if that's what it costs, that's what it costs. I'm fine with that. But all of a sudden, no matter what we do, they're going to get 2.256 million dollars. And either we're going to underwrite or we're going to underwrite it by cutting our taxes so that they'll lessen the impact on property owners to make sure the fire department goes from 1.6 to 2.2, or we hope the county commissioners will down theirs, but that's, that's my argument is that as accountability goes, okay, if it costs 1.68 million for them to provide services within our town limits, what, how do we justify going from 1.6 one year to 2.2? I don't have anything to tell taxpayers about what they're getting for their additional, you know, $700,000 a year for that 40% increase from one year to the next. And, you know, and that's why I asked for a budget for the fire department almost a year ago because it's our biggest single line item on the budget. And we're accountable for it. We don't have control over it and we don't want to get in the fire department business. We don't want to be in their business either. However, we had to be accountable for what it goes for. And at least if somebody says, well, why does it all cost a million dollars a year to get sheriff's department to enforce or to do law enforcement with our town boundaries? Well, I mean, you know, it gets awful granular on theirs, you know, from what the equipment is to vehicles, to staff, to vacation employer share of comps that, you know, I've got all that. And so I can show them, this is why it costs a million dollars, but I can't show them right now, anything, why it costs 1.6 and why it should cost 2.2 the next year. And if they need $3 million a year, then they need to come to us and saying, well, you know, we hope you'll, you know, keep us at the 2.2, but we really need to be at three. But, you know, that's why I can't deal with these unknowns that it's a service that we provide and we're accountable for that money. And we're talking about a lot of money. We're talking, you know, 1.6 now 2.2 million dollars. And I can't tell them where it's going, what it's doing. Oh, you're getting fire protection for it. And that's just not the way to operate. And that's why, you know, while you like the pass through, hands off, you know, and it makes things simple, but like I said, it's still, we're accountable for that money and we don't have much to show for it. And I don't think it's a good way to do business to simply say their services might cost this much this year, it might be 40% next year. But, you know, and we'll just adjust our revenues to make sure that, you know, they keep getting what, what's up there. But I just think we need to look at a new contract when this one expires that looks more like what we've been doing for other services and not just contract for a tax rate. But that's why I think you and I differ is because you, you see two things on your tax bill. You see the Mills River and they are broken out, but I still see it as that's the Mills River tax rate. And no matter what we have 11 cents, but, and you see is this is what Mills River is doing. This is what the fire department is doing. And maybe that's easier sell to property owners, but I just, I have real misgivings about passing that money through when actually we're paying for services that we're banking on. It's something, it's one of our core services that we do to be incorporated as a town. And we should have a better accounting of what it costs to actually do and to do it in this town. And so that's why I'm, you know, beating this drum now. And this is going to put us in hardship for one year because of the contract we currently have, but I don't think it's the way we should go forward. And so that's why I raise it now. There's, you know, there's nothing to be done this year because we're in a contract. They're going to get their 11 cents no matter what. They'll get 2.2 based on these projections, but I just, you know.
Well, last year at visioning, Daniel said that we never got a budget from the fire department that, you know, we just didn't know. So, you know, it would be nice to know something.
We, we had, we did get that last year. I don't recall seeing it, but we did get it. So that was my mistake. And I have, I did ask that they give us previous record or previous years. So I've got those and I can send those to you so you can get an idea of what it would look like, what it has looked like. And we have not asked them to come present because kind of to Shannon's point, the tax rate is what the tax rate is. And so we, we do the math and we plug that in. But we can certainly, and I think that's, Rick and I talked about that a little bit, that when he comes this spring, he, he'll just walk through that with you. I think Jeff, it will give you some more about accountability that you're talking about because it will break it down. Now I haven't looked at it in a couple of weeks, so I can't tell you what level of detail it is, but it's more than just 11, 11 cents times the, times the property value. So it'll give you some idea of what, what they're, what they're doing with it. So I'll share those with you. If I can't do it today, I'll get it to you on Monday. I'll send it out to everybody.
And like the farmer's market with ARPA funds, you know, they had to come into account or, and they got ARPA funds too, you know, are they going to let us know how that was?
That was all spent through premium pay for their, for their employees. And I, I believe they did, they did give us something right last year soon.
Uh, we just never heard about it.
It might've been before the election.
That was decided before the election.
That's right.
And then it was dispersed right after we took office.
Okay.
And then we, but we did know for each one, who was getting out, not exactly how, but how many was getting.
And I do have an accounting of how it comes spread out, not by name, but this, and I didn't share it because we don't share everything that comes through this office with council. If that's what we need to do, we will, but we touch a lot of stuff that we don't share with council.
Well, I know when we kept discussing the ARPA funds, you know, I thought the ARPA funds wasn't dispensed to them until last year after budgeting, when it, when we had gotten the money and it was done. Had it already been paid at a town budget and then reimbursed?
I know what you're saying.
At some point in time, you know, and I think Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy was a little bit adamant about making sure they got it because it was a previous council's decision to make sure they got it. We was waiting on all those letters of, when we hired the guys to draft all the language and all that and we were waiting to that to disperse to them. And then at some point real quickly, it, we realized we was going to be able to go ahead and get it for.
That's right.
Which would have been probably May, end of April, May, June, somewhere between that.
Last year, yeah.
Yes. And, and yes, if you want to look at it that way, we paid it and once we knew how we could spend the ARPA money, more or less reimbursed our, ourselves.
Oh, okay.
Soon we realized we was going to, uh, employee payback, yeah, expenses for town. We can do it there.
Any other questions on tax, taxes? We'll continue to update you on these numbers as they, as we get them in, as they, they will continue to change as is, as is normal. Um, we've got a presenter coming in in a few minutes, but I'll go ahead and get back to our presentation and run through a couple of things before they get here.
I just have one quick question, if I may. The other taxes to property, the downward trend from last year to the projections, is that typical or everything's depreciating? Is that why those typically going down or?
I'd have to look back at the previous years and talk with, speak with orderly. I just don't know off the top of my head what that answer is.
I should know if that's a normal or if that's.
I've asked at the county level and as you see that real property increasing, it got the reevaluation. The, the vehicles and everything, if you can imagine, Kelley Blue Book or whatever, even though some vehicles and stuff may raise in price, some of the older stuff sitting around may be a lot less. And these other individuals and stuff in your house, your personal property and all that, they figure it's depreciating so much a year, every year. That's how that drops. There's some factor for the new homes coming in. It's the what they declare they got in there that would help raise it back up, but it, right now, it don't seem to be. We got a lot more older residents than we got new houses. So that's why that's always seems to be a decline over over the last few years is what I was told from the county level.
All right, thank you.
So we talked a little bit about this last night, but I just wanted to give kind of a recap of what we've been working on this year. There's been a lot going on. Shelter, obviously, we talked about last night. Um, we were able to complete the office upgrades to the conference room next door. Uh, we've got two cubicles in there now, a new conference table. We finished our audio visual streaming project. Um, we adopted the, excuse me, the watershed ordinance, which was a big one. Um, I think I've explained this to you, but up for, up until the spring of 2021, the county had been providing watershed administration services and then ceased doing that. So we took that on, uh, which was a big, a big lift. And then we've hired two new staff people this year, which has been, they've both been an incredible addition as well as part-time. Um, we've implemented the permit software that was, we've talked about for a long time now. That's operational, as Mike mentioned last night. People are submitting code enforcement requests through there. They have gotten a permit application or two, I believe. Um, they're working on some final tweaks before they really do a big push publicly. Uh, but it is working. Nicole's Parks and Recreation software is up and running and, and people are registering through that. We mentioned the grant last night for the sidewalk project, ramp project. We purchased the land next door, so we have three and a half more acres than we did this time last year, which was a big accomplishment. The town has been trying to do that for a long time. Um, we had a successful Santa tour this year. Did our first movie night in the park last spring, or last fall, excuse me. Um, this spring, we're doing brunch with the bunny on April 1st. It's not a joke. Uh, it really is happening on the first. That'll be a good time. Um, we're partnering with North River Farms for Mills River Day, helping them out with sponsorships and some of the logistics. And then the Meadow Project. As of yesterday, I think we got our last, our last piece of that puzzle, right? We were able to go to bid. Got our road control permit from the state. So things are happening. Um, you've all been very supportive of a lot of different things. And I think it's just, it's good to take a look, a minute, look back at the things that we've talked about for a while and see where they are. Um, as we're getting in, getting, get into developing the budget for next year. And are there any questions about any of this stuff before we move on?
You hadn't made any response from, uh, City Henderson or Asheville in the watershed.
I've not, no, I, I got a message from the city manager of Asheville a while back and she was going to put me in touch with someone. I've not heard from that someone, uh, but I'll have a look into that again.
Try to keep following up on that if you can.
Sure.
How much does it cost to do movie night?
Um, so specifically, so currently we have the red screen, so it's about a thousand dollars for screen, screen cell system setup. Um, and then depending on the movie, there's a like, um, anywhere from 300 to 600 dollars. Then we charge us more.
So. Under 2,000.
Yeah, under 2,000.
Okay. And brunch with the bunny, that's going to be at the school? Okay. Are they letting us use it or do we have to pay for it?
No, um, yeah, we have a, a MOU school, so we can use our, that's what it's doing, the only thing. Um, because food is involved. You get a cafeteria or whatever to be there. So, um, that will be part of this also, as far as using facility.
That's good.
I had, there we are, skip ahead. Uh, I've not heard, Asheville, I've not been able to catch up with anyone. Hendersonville has asked that we send them a letter for their board to consider. So, um, one of the things that you saw on that last screen, where several projects were at the Parks and Recreation. And so we have invited, um, representative of the Parks Trails and Recreation Advisory Committee to come speak with you. Nicole, I'll let you do introductions for Tristan, if you would please.
Just re linked in.
Morning.
Morning.
Thanks for having me. Um, yeah, just want to give you a quick update, um, slash goals that we're looking for, for 2023 and 2024. Um, and yeah, open it up for any questions, thoughts. Um, yeah, in no particular order. Um, we just got, uh, the accessibilities for parks grant funding awarded, so, uh, we can kind of move forward on improvements for the playground and moving, moving forward with that project. I think you guys are probably covering some of the new programs. Um, we hired a programmer, as you guys all know. We've had good success with the movie night in the fall. Um, you guys are planning events for this year. Uh, we got the Santa tour again and we had. Uh, we got the Santa tour again and we had it uh last Christmas, um, and then also Mills River Day in May. And uh, yeah, really targeting pre-K and kind of older generations, kind of the two uh shoulders there uh that we feel like are are weak areas and we want to really improve. See what else we can do on. As kind of a commitment slash goal, uh, we want to keep moving forward with the banner Banner Farm uh road property. Um, and you know, we feel really strongly about the uh potential of that and uh farmer's market being there, um trails being there, um kind of other recreation use. So uh we want to kind of keep, you know, keep that on the forefront. That's a big goal for us in twenty twenty-four and beyond. Congrats to the new property. Um, behind the, is there a name for that? Behind the chimney, that kind of corner there. Um, that's uh, you know, kind of earmarked um with a a couple of different ideas um for the parks and rec side of things. I think it'd be great for a maintenance shed, um kind of expanding on what we already have. Um, just to kind of have, you know, a little bit more little room, more equipment, uh, all that sort of stuff. Um, also in that uh chimney area, uh, we discussed um putting the butterfly garden that was on the master plan uh more towards the meadow, um, but it sounds like it's gonna be better suited for plant wise to kind of be a little bit separate from that. That meadow uh and uh a better location, probably better used. Um, and I think, yeah, uh improves otherwise underdeveloped space. Um, it is part of the master plan, um, and that's a good good opportunity to kind of push it forward. And I want to say it's budgeted for twenty-three. Okay, cool. Never mind. Alright, well, thanks. Um, and then we the kind of the uh one of the biggest ma- uh most recent things was the uh proposed recreation program fees and cost recovery, which you guys were talking about just now. The kind of the biggest point that I want to make with that is, you know, and you guys probably already discussed it. Um, this year, next year, it might require a little bit more cost upfront just to kind of get these things off the ground. And then as it's built, build some traction, build some interest, it'll probably kind of start to run itself. So it might be more commitment this year, next year. Um, to kind of like get that wheel going. And then after that, um, probably a little bit less. Um, so yeah, more seed money in twenty-three, twenty-four, the down road, hopefully. And uh, yeah, one of our our last um kind of pushes, I don't think it's on the the budget, but um lights for the baseball field would be also on the horizon, so. List of goals and updates.
I guess the question I might have is regarding this property behind the chimney, um, has the committee? Excuse me, has the committee looked at it and looked at your surveys and your goals? Have you tried to plug anything in over there? Obviously, you know, staff is looking towards, you know, having a maintenance component. Certainly, that won't be all of it, but have you all discussed it, I guess, are you looking at?
Not specifically. I mean, it's it's kind of, um, it's kind of split between that butter butterfly garden and maintenance shed. Um, we haven't earmarked something specifically, uh, where we, you know, like, oh, it'd be really good for this. Um, I think as a as a board, um, we we feel it'd be better suited to have the farmer's market at the banner farm property than in that space, um, because that's that, there's an area already earmarked for that. Um, for the farmer's market there.
But I'd be very curious to hear the committee's uh, you know, hopes and aspirations for that property, you know. If solely up to y'all, what would you like to see over there? Because obviously there's competing interest for it and we want to best serve the town and Mills River and uh want y'all to weigh in. So I hope it's on as chair that I hope it'll be on your
Yeah.
Radar to advise us on what you'd like to see there.
Yep, we can, we can talk about that next next meeting, which is in two weeks, three weeks. We can definitely do that.
I think it's the needs for the lights on the baseball field. Are we seeing a great need for them at this point or just a great idea for them at this point?
Great idea. Uh, we haven't.
Do you think lights would necess- excuse me, necessitate, uh, necessitate, get it out? Uh, additional staffing because of those after dark hours that the park may be open now with lights and that kind of thing?
I think, I mean, one of the things with this park is those ones.
But realistically, you'd need more resources to manage a lighted field than what we have now.
Have any idea what lights would cost on the field? I know about.
I got a price is several years ago. Um, and this was like three million dollars. I mean, it's, and this was for tennis, basketball and baseball.
So we would have to change our policy about cause now nobody's supposed to be in the park after dark, correct?
You take it a little bit more than a light, because I've heard a couple um programs that have said, oh man, we would love to use that, but you guys don't like.
Yeah, that's just kind of a there's, there's, um, I wanted to put that in there because that was a most recent suggestion, but um I would concentrate on some other items first.
Is anything like that we could seek grant application for?
Could that be solar?
I don't know that that technology is out there silver. The good news is they are LED days. Uh, they are a lot less expensive and then to you're like a lot less expensive than it used to be. But I I I've never heard of solar.
Any questions?
You have other, I
Yeah, yeah, um, definitely. We'll speak to the, yeah, um. We can uh, we can discuss the lights a little bit more and identify some specifics for that property uh behind the chimney. But uh, yeah, I think um, looking at the list, I think the accessibility is for parks grant funding. That's gonna be, you know, high priority. It's, we can move on that sooner than later. Um, the butterfly garden, that's already in the budget. Um, and then I I would say, you know, banner farm property would be a uh higher priority.
Might suggest something over there on that property. Might want to look into maybe a pop track.
That sounds good, yeah. Hiking trails, uh, bird watching stations, outdoor classroom. Yes.
Okay.
Cool. Well, yeah, just um, thank you all. Um, and uh, yeah, um, thank you for all you do. And if you ever need anything from us, uh, please let me know.
Thanks, Tristan.
Thank you.
You wouldn't know it looking at him, but he is one of the strongest back riders that's ever been in this in this area. I'm not kidding.
Yeah, there's a whole contingent of extended regard. That look like him that you think not much of, but.
I've been chasing him for years.
Alright, how's everybody doing?
Good, good.
We're all awake now? Alright. I don't have any magic tricks for you, so we'll just, we'll just jump into the next item here. Um, so we've talked a little bit about the pedestrian plan. And uh, this is something that the town has been working on for a couple of years now, really. Originally, the town applied for a grant in in twenty nineteen, did not receive funding and then applied for it again in twenty twenty and did receive funding. Um, the state break, this is a state sponsored plan. It's actually funded by the State of North Carolina Department of Transportation. And the town signs on um to basically have the plan done within the community. And um, the way that this works is we apply and uh based off our population, there's a formula at the state level that dictates how much money the towns matches for something like this. Because we're less than ten thousand people, we had a ten percent match. So the total cost of the project was fifty thousand dollars and the match was five thousand. Uh, the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club actually donated twenty-five hundred. So the town has only uh put in twenty-five hundred dollars of cash to match this program. Um, again, it's funded by the State Department of Transportation, managed through the Integrated Mobility Division. And the state actually hires the consultant. We can request who to work with, but at the end of the day, that's the state's decision. And we did request traffic planning and design because they have done several plans in the area. And they're very good at what they do. Uh, they did Fletcher's and a number of other groups, our towns in the community or in the area rather. Um, and they've been very good to work with. So it's it's a team effort. And I thought since the plan is in its final draft form, it would be good to get it in front of you guys. So we passed out copies of it this morning uh in front of you. And again, this is the final draft version. It's not adopted yet and still needs to go through the review process. So for today, I wanted to just kind of run through the highlights of the plan. And you you're gonna need time to read it, obviously, so I don't expect you to know any answers or have anything memorized, but um, just wanted to go through it, answer some general questions, talk about where we're going from here. Um, so the plan has has four specific goals. And those are to create a network of greenways, sidewalks, off-road facilities, bike lanes, uh, to connect destinations throughout the community, connect the schools, connect the parks. Um, building safe streets. So oftentimes people, well, I think we all just default to thinking streets are for cars and trucks. And uh generally speaking, that's how they're designed. Um, but that's not the only, those are not the only users. Um, there are other things we can do in terms of outside of just raw infrastructure. Um, in terms of um uh promoting walking and biking as a culture. Um, so there are things that people do. There's safe routes to school programs where you basically um teach kids how to get to school safely. You can do bike rodeos and teach kids how to learn, how to learn on the road, set up stop signs. Um, and teach them what it means to, you know, stop at a stop sign, look left and right, all that kind of good stuff. Um, and this doesn't all have to be something that the town does. So when when this is reviewed by you all, don't think about it in terms of a price tag of two point six million. The town has to do all of that on its own. There are ways that the town can structure its policies and and ordinances that encourage and or require um pedestrian projects to be built. Um, the only real example we have of this now is is subdivisions over a certain size are required to put in sidewalks. Uh, there are a lot of communities who have these pedestrian plans on file. And then when a development comes in, after they're building, you know, on the property adjacent to the road where a bike path is gonna go, that developer is required to build that bike path. So it's not always a hundred percent on the community. Um, it's usually a shared, a shared endeavor by public, private, um, and and oftentimes grants to get something built. So I think it's important to understand why we're doing this. Uh, most importantly, in my mind, it's looking to the future. That's why we plan is to make better decisions about the future. Um, that second one there, I think is extremely important, the NCDOT Complete Streets Policy. So a few years ago, the state um adopted this policy. It's called Complete Streets. So again, in general terms, uh, folks think of streets being for cars and trucks um, uh exclusively. But there are a lot of other users. There's um people on foot, people on bikes. Um, there are other things, um, farm equipment, other uses of the street that aren't just uh vehicles. And so with the Complete Streets Policy, every highway project or every state road project of the state designs, they're now required to look at that policy and incorporate anything that is feasible within that design um to accommodate pedestrians safely. So it could be sidewalks, it could be bike lanes, it could be bike paths separated from the from the road. Um, and the reason that they uh, the reason that we do this is so that they look at the town's plan and say, oh, the town has adopted this plan. We're gonna put it into our design at state level and then the state would pay for it. So it's really a good thing in in terms of getting things done um with other funding than local taxpayers. It does take a little bit longer relying exclusively on the State Department of Transportation. But the point is, it's there as as road projects um come together. So the overview of the plan is just that. There's an introduction. They did some analysis of the community in terms of demographics, employment centers. There's the actual network itself, which is the the map of where the of the different facilities would go. Um, programs and policies is what I was talking about in terms of educational programs to get people familiar with being on bikes, how to navigate the road network safely. Um, and ordinance changes. And then, of course, implementation of the plan, which will come after it's adopted. We would look to um, you know, program projects in as capital improvement projects, partnering with private development to get projects built. Uh, working with the state on highway plans. And the implementation phase is really where the river meets the road, so to speak. So the first chapter is background. Um, there was a steering committee that established a vision. Um, I'm not gonna go through all this right now, but just kind of give you some highlights on what's in the document. So that's what you're gonna see in that first chapter is is kind of the history of the project and why it's important. As you're reading through these document, as this document rather, just take a moment to think about any questions you might have, write down any comments that you that you make in the in the plan itself. Any of the changes that you want to see? Uh, does it look goo- good the way it's written? Again, this is its draft form and it it's so going if you're into view process and we can, we can certainly make changes as anyone like, anyone would like to do that. Um, the next section, the second chapter is the community analysis, which is where they talk about um the community itself, again, demographics, population. Um, what is actually in the community, education, housing, sort of the traditional um community analysis that you would see in any any traditional planning document. Also notifies, or excuse me, identifies some of the key destinations in the community that that this plan is trying to connect. And if you're really interested in terms of um, some of the nuts and bolts of it, there's information about um different roads in town, average annual daily traffic counts, which are good to know, um, speed limits. Same thing, as you're reviewing this, look for um any comments you might have, any questions? Um, anything you want to change, make note of that and we can get back to that. The third chapter um is is the network itself. So that's looking at where the routes were identified. Um, the type of facilities that were that are each of those routes. So whether it's a sidewalk, on the road, bike lane, um, a greenway, which can be separated or some combination thereof. And that's really what I wanted to to highlight in this presentation this morning is going through the top ten projects that were identified through the through the planning process. But this first one here, Mills River Elementary School from Mills River Park, um, is that red dashed line that you're looking in the plan. Starting on page sixty-four. And Mike, feel free to chime in if I leave anything out here. So the steering committee identified some destinations in town that they'd wanna connect, and then the consultants looked at the existing roadway. And looked at what would make the most sense in terms of infrastructure to get point A and point B. And in this instance, the, the park to the elementary school, looking at a ten-foot wide multi-use path, which is basically imagine the walking trail that we have around the park. It'd be asphalt separated from the roadway. And it would keep kids completely off the travel lane, which is really the safest way to do it. And they do have price tags in here, this one's at two point seven million. I will say that that's, that's done by, the state has a bicycle pedestrian cost estimating tool, which is an Excel spreadsheet. That they developed a few years ago. So they're not, they're not specific to an individual project, it's, you plug in numbers, like, is it mountainous terrain, is it flat terrain? The type of facility, whether it's a ten-foot path or is a sidewalk. And it spits out a number. The actual cost of this would probably be different than that, but these are just to give you some idea of what it would look like. This is a, one of the more expensive way to do it, what you're having is a completely separate off-road facility of ten feet of asphalt. But again, it's the most attractive as a, as a user. And probably the safest way you can do it.
And the state would have to acquire right-of-way for this, I would assume?
In most cases, the smaller roads, probably. The highway rights of ways, like two eighty, for example, are quite wide. And.
Yeah, but they can't, they can't be that close to that speed though, can they? By state law?
Yeah, there's, there's what's called a clear recovery area. And Jeff, feel free to chime in if I'm getting this, this stuff wrong, but there's a clear recovery area based upon the speed limit of the road. And it's not as far as you'd think.
Okay.
And it poses. There you go.
Home fifty-five?
So yeah, a, a lot of the smaller roads like school, schoolhouse, for example. I'm best, I'm guessing those rights of ways are pretty, pretty close up to the ditches, if not at the back of the ditch, so yeah, then would, would probably have to acquire right-of-way.
I remember this, when a subdivision was looking at going through there to get water and sewer. A lot of those landowners actually owned to the center of school. Even.
We could just have him come up front somewhere, have him turn around.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for the opportunity to speak. I showed up uninvited like I do to my family reunion, so. DOT has two types of right-of-way, one is an easement. It's just permission to maintain and build and operate a roadway on private property. And in that case, the, the right-of-way goes to the center of the roadway.
Okay.
That, generally, when you have an unpaved road, the state goes out, they send out people to, to get people to sign right-of-way so that they can build it generally, forty-five to fifty feet wide is the minimum to improve a road, and that is an easement. On a primary highway like one ninety-one or two eighty, the state buys right-of-way. Or condemns it, which is just, they buy it at what's determined to be the fair market value. And then it's a fee simple right-of-way, it's actual state property. And the property line ends at the edge of the right-of-way, so schoolhouse road being a secondary roadway is most likely an easement. I do remember sometime ago, about ten years ago, my mother signed right-of-way. She said, they're wanting me to sign right-of-way to, to do something here in this curve, I said, do it, mom. You know, look at this road, look at this, try to pull out of our driveway. You know, anything we can do to make it safer. So there, there is some right-of-way that exists, but I'm not sure how far.
Okay.
And then, since I'm button in with sidewalk, one of the good things about having a plan and having sidewalk, even though it may not necessarily connect to anywhere. If the DOT comes in to widen a roadway or build some sort of a project and they have to tear up our sidewalk, they'll replace it at their cost. So you might, you know, people may think, well, why are we making someone build sidewalk here when DOT is just doing to come in in ten years and tear it up? Well, it will be replaced at their cost when that happens. And they also, they also upgrade crossings, and that's another part of this, if there is a crosswalk there or a crossing, the DOT will come in, even if they just repave the road, and they will upgrade that to make it ADA compatible.
So hang on for just a second. Say on the upper map from C to D.
Yes, sir.
That's going through private property, correct? So they would have to acquire a right-of-way or something through there?
It would most likely be the town doing something like that. The state's really only gonna stick to the rights of ways with that, with the fair assessment.
Yes, sir, that's correct, and I, the state doesn't maintain sidewalk. As a multi-use path, I'm not sure if the state would maintain that or not, I believe the town would have responsibility where it gets off the DOT right-of-way. So it would, that would be ours too, as a town to maintain.
So I guess that's hitting on what a question I had, I was just sitting there thinking, so this was the number one on the list, you know? Does it, did anybody approach about crossing private property or even ask if it
No, I don't.
Or is this just a dream, a pie and sky thing?
This is, pie and sky is a little bit out there. It's more of a dream, I guess.
Talking about, yeah, going across somebody's private property and putting it on
Yeah.
A map. That, and you haven't even spoken with property owners, I think that's a little bit on the
We did not reach out to any property owner specifically in this project for any of these connections. We're looking at how to, how to best connect the connections, and the next step would be to reach out to those folks, figure out if it's possible.
And just one other question, so there was one that leads here from the elementary school to the brewery? Is that really somewhere?
It looks like it's going to the brewery.
Even though I don't drink after some of the days I had at the elementary school.
Training.
I would have wanted to.
Would the town be the one purchasing the right-of-way across private property or is that the state?
It'd be the town.
Okay.
So a question I would have, if, if this comes to a wish and it was in place. Someone gets injured. How does that, how does that handle, is it, we have to have an insurance policy if it's, I'm assuming if it's in our name?
Okay, we would, just like we do in after the trails in the park.
Okay. I just see this being a little more riskier venture. Than just riding over here.
Certainly, yeah.
And one thing, I think that when this was looked at and I was on the, the steering committee. It may not be that we would go to someone and say, hey, would you give us the right-of-way, and that, and that may be the case, but if it were to develop. Then would the developer be willing to give up some right-of-way for this as an amenity? And sometimes it's like a develop, the ordinance says, the zoning ordinance may request or may require a certain amount of green space. It's okay, well, would this count towards your green space? And then the town takes it over and maintains it as a, as a greenway, right? A multi-use path. So that might be an option where we see that it may not be developed today, but someday it may develop, and as part of that. That might be the opportunity to get that right-of-way.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I guess my, another question I've had is on some of these points of interest, have we reached out to anybody for the points of interest?
No, what do you mean?
Like, like points of interest on here were bear joints and elementary schools, like, has anybody asked if that's even a point of interest?
Well, the steering committee.
They wanna be on, or if they consider themselves a point of interest?
No, I don't believe we were, had reached out to anyone specifically in that, I mean, I, I spoke to the brewery about it specifically. And they're interested, but the rest of the ones were, were points of interest that were identified with Mills River, I'm sorry, there's, there's multiple ones. No, and the, and these aren't areas that we let me know to answer your question. But these were identified by the steering committee as points of interest at the, at the community level.
They were also identified.
I just don't want my name connected to anything that has trail connected to an elementary school, to a bear joint. You're gonna get a note from me every single time.
And when they were doing those surveys. I think I spoke with you on that and told you that I personally tried and could not get on there and ask if they could redo them, and you said they would, but they never did.
We'd, yeah. I mean, if, if the council wants to do an additional round of surveys, there's, we can certainly do that. I don't remember the number that we got last year.
I think when I talked to you, you said seventeen people had done the survey.
That may have been at that time, I don't remember what it is, what the cost was.
Yeah.
I guess money-wise, like how far down the like how much do we wanna spend? Before we take, you know? Ask very real questions. I, I may or may not know two of the owners for your number one plan. You may wanna ask before we spend too, too much money. I mean. I'm not gonna speak for them, but.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think that, that's wise, and that's why.
I'm just asking like, what's the, like, what is that amount?
Oh, that's, I don't, I don't have an amount, I mean, right now, we've, we've invested twenty-five hundred dollars in the plan as far as our match. But we've not done any sort of design work or anything like that.
Okay, so it's not like this is a
It's not an immediate process, it's still.
Yeah, but I'm saying even this, it's not like it's big money yet.
No. No, but it really, the only, the only, other than poor staff time and, and printing out the, the plan. The only funding the town is dedicated to this is the match that it paid eighteen months ago, I guess it was, yeah.
But in total, it's fifty thousand invested plus staff time and, and yes.
Yeah, you're getting up there.
Yeah, and that's, that's the state's part, state's portion of it, right? So the second identified route was between the Mills River Elementary School and the park, the future park, at Banner Farm Road. Which is very similar to what we just looked at, but this is, first one was from the school to, to Mills River Park, this is from school to Banner Farm Park. Any questions on this route?
Is that like in Mills River Brewery's front parking lot?
I don't know, I think.
It would be behind the brewery. The third route that was identified. These were bicycle lanes between Highway two eighty and I twenty-six. Obviously, the town's portion would only be through the town limits, but this is just identifying the entire route.
So this one, this one that's just down Banner Farm, right?
About the bridge.
Or about the bridge.
Looks like it's two eighty to Glen Marlowe. To Jeffers Road. And then down across Hooper Lane. And there's a will they do the state bridge across the river or do they have to build one?
Well, these are bike lanes, so these would be built on the bridge if they replaced that, they wouldn't be separate.
Didn't they just replace the bridge down here?
I think so.
Did they put one on there? Okay.
Oh, they'd redo the bridge?
What's that?
They'd redo a new bridge?
No, they wouldn't do it specifically for this purpose, but.
Yeah, and where would parking be for any of this?
A lot of these, like this one, for example, there wouldn't be dedicated parking, this is an identified route that people use on bikes already. This would be an improvement to the road itself to make people who are already using the road safer.
It's basically if you wanna come out of your garage or your bicycle and go to Fletcher or come back over to two eighty, it would give you a route through there with a bicycle or a wagon. Person, buggy or on a wagon.
Yeah, these aren't, most of these aren't your traditional, like trailhead type of trails, it's, it's thinking about it in terms of a network for people on foot and on bike, using mostly existing road, road alignments. Any questions on that third route? And then the fourth one that was identified was getting down from Banner Farm Road to the future Acusta Trail. So I'm sure you've all heard, but the, just in case you haven't, the Acusta Trail is roughly following Highway sixty-four between Hendersonville and Brevard, and the county is working on the first several miles of it right now from Hendersonville westward. And so the idea with this one would be to connect the, the town to the trail.
One thing you'll have to think about, if this comes to, and you're crossing through private property owners, is the the fire departments and all have to set up a separate vehicle to get to those points to recover an injured person or something, like you may not be able to drive a pickup. Might not, it'd be, a lot of places will be prohibited to get on it with a pickup. So you couldn't get one on there and run people over pretty much, but they've run into it with the Acusta Trail also. You know, Valley Hill and all them are buying special vehicles to be able to get onto that Acusta Trail and run up it to access people. It's, uh, they didn't realize it, well, it was just here a few recently. They ain't gonna be able to get across some of those bridges and all with trucks, so they're gonna have to have something there but set up to haul somebody and keep them, it's a storm, keep them warm, keep them dry. And be able to haul personnel, EMS or whatever to them and bring them back to the ambulance. That was another biggie that they run across that they hadn't thought about early on.
Are we gonna have law enforcement have vehicles to where they can ride them? You already do, so y'all will be patrolling this too if that happen? Okay. Well, I mean, like in, if Mills River does a portion of this. You know, would they be riding these trails too? Okay.
So Daniel, like the Latson Road or, or Banner Farm Road, the, the number of properties that would have to cross is gonna be it's gonna be tough. I mean, really tough. So do you, do you envision and, and I know everybody else will have an opinion about this, uh, it's gonna be a lot, lot less invasive on people's property to go up the river to the bridge at Banner Farm. So did, did you look at that as an option? Or is, I know the river floods and the river puts sediment on, on the ground and stuff, but, you know. The trail in Hendersonville floods and puts sediment on the trail, everything to be able to to deal with it.
Only thing is Randy is like through super sod. Either way you go, and you think of what they get per square foot on sod and you're gonna pay. Having lunch, how expensive would that actually be?
Yeah.
It's a re.
But I mean, coming from the bridge up the river is there's. I think I counted it, it was like. Plus than ten property owners to to Banner Farm Bridge.
I think so, it would be dodging the points of interest. Instead of a thoroughfare. I think this is the state, when I go to these tack meetings and MPOs. They do want it for a uh bicycle protection thoroughfare. But they also want you passing by these points of interest for retail, uh libraries.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Restaurants.
I think it would be very beneficial for the town to have a a link to that Acousta Trail, which it's gonna happen. But realistically, I don't. I don't ever see. Them being able to acquire right away on Banner Farm or on the Latson, either one, to make it all the way down there. Whereas I think the path, the least resistance would be along the river, but I don't even know if that's possible.
One of the main complications with that is it would be all at town cost. So I mean, one thing I wanted to clarify is this. This plan is looking mostly at roadway facilities. So this isn't, this is not meant to be like a a trail plan for the town that's going off. It's really about how do we incorporate pedestrian and bicycle facilities, ideally within s- state road networks. Because if we did go along the river, we would probably, you know, disturb fewer property owners, but it would be completely at the town's cost.
All right, that makes sense.
And the and the county is already looking at making some of those connections, like you notice on some of these, you'll see a green line. Where there's the French Broad Greenway. So there are other plans out there that might be doing something like that, but to Mike's point. This is sponsored by the DOT and the DOT typically works with an existing rights of ways or. Follows existing roads. And and the benefit, like of this one in particular, um if Banner Farm is widened. Um, the way it's widened is it it needs to be, um with this plan on on the books, if it's adopted. They will incorporate um as much as they can in the design to make this a more bicycle friendly, safer route for people to use.
Yes. A little pause I have with that is, you know, if they widen Banner Farm or widen Latson. And and we have this planned place and there's property owner up through there, okay, they're gonna lose this much for the DOT if they just put the road up through there. But if we have this planned place and we want the trail up through there, they're gonna lose another fifteen or twenty feet of property. But because we've got this planned place that we're asking for this trail. And that's, you know, that, to me, that's pretty invasive on people's property.
Just to clarify, the the two connections uh or proposed connections to the Acousta Trail are just bike paths. So it's actually only a a four foot shoulder.
So you're talking about a shoulder, you're not talking about a separate path.
That's exactly right. Now, some of the projects do have those separated side paths, so it just depends upon what the consultants pro- propose for each project.
And right now, federally, I think they're doing one down one ninety one to two eighty. And then go, is it going towards Brevard?
The bike path? It's, no, the design of it is to go north up to eight. So it'll just wrap around a little bit and then stop. But there is the Mills River Valley Trail was intended to go from that same intersection and continue on north. But there's nothing currently planned to go to south. I mean, there is recognition in this plan, but nothing currently on the books.
And when we heard the spill on the Mills River Valley Plan years ago, uh up through there, they just wanna keep it like thirty feet off the edge of the road. But they got a lot of right away up through there. And so it was gonna, they was gonna have to pick up a piece or two here and there, but most of it was still turning up right away. My biggest concern with that one, and I don't know if it'll affect history or not, but. When you come to the end, you, you know, your driveway. Take where I live, for instance. If it was on that side of the road, I would stop, there'd be a stop sign basically for to check the. Then I would get in that gap and that was the reason for the thirty foot. You'd have to have somewhere to get in that gap to let pedestrians and bikes travel behind you at that point. Then you'd have to get into the road. You got it blocked for a minute. You should, yeah, you got it blocked for a minute. Yeah, it was, it was, for our community, it was, you know, I think when the. Farmers and the red that's here. The impact of their property being that far off the road and the stopping in between the two, it would be.
That's the right way of the biker?
Uh, yeah.
Pedestrian always has right away.
Even if you're coming down your private driveway.
So now, but that one's federal? Or is it federal? It's it's going through, the one that's going down one ninety one and two eighty.
That's the state project you're talking about.
The state project, yeah.
Yeah, that's the state project.
So that one's going. And then do this on top of it?
No, no, this this would be project out out in the future. Nothing, none of the, none of the projects in here are. Have been planned beyond just this conceptual route. So no- nothing is on the books. It hasn't been adopted by anybody. These are just the conceptual routes that have been identified. Uh, so the the Latson Road to the Acousta Trail, very similar to the last design on um. On Banner Farm would be increased shoulders. So right now, that's about eleven and a half foot travel lane and it would stay at the same width and there'd be four foot shoulders out on the other side.
On both sides.
Yeah, but we don't, we're not the town on the one side.
What's that?
We're not the town on one side.
Right. Yeah, this it doesn't mean.
On the one side.
What's that?
We could just do it on the one side.
And just for a little ways, I mean, if you're coming out.
Well, we couldn't pay for it on the other side. Now, the state might still put it in as part of the road project. But if there was any payment or anything additional that we wanted, we wouldn't pay for that outside the town limits, no. The sixth project identified was the Mills River Park, the park we're sitting in, out to Butler Bridge. Um, and this would be a multi-use side path along Hooper Lane, which they did a. A photo rendering there to give you an idea of what it would look like. Um, and this would be a separated path from the road. I make it realistic. All right, number seven is North Mills. Um, this would be, again, just a strategic widening. Where they could put in. Basically a shoulder. Uh, where there's room is what this project is. So travel lanes would be the same thing, same width rather. And then they would put in a four foot shoulder. Uh, just to give folks on bike, uh a little bit more room to work with.
I guess the significant difference in cost estimate is from the separation, the the land obtained, I guess. It's basically doubled. From that last one to this one. The Butler Bridge to here. Was like three eight, I think.
Yeah. Well, the the three eight one.
Probably gotta get across the bridge too, I'm sure.
With that, and also it is um more right of way acquisition would be a big chunk of that. And then it's just a wider path, whereas the the North Mills is just an extension of existing pavement.
I don't know which side of that road would be safe. One's a bank, other one's.
Yeah.
Ditched.
Well, when they do a bike lane just on one side, or I guess call it shoulder. Do they intend for you only ride with traffic as you're supposed to? You can get in, but you can't get out, or how's that?
That's a good question.
Spooky, huh?
I got a good bit of experience on bike lanes and and pedestrian things from my time at the city of Asheville. And it's different. Asheville's different. You've got the street network, you've got the urban areas. We don't have that. In areas, though, where there's room for one bike lane, the other lane generally gets a share of. And that's where it's painted on the pavement. Or it's melted down with thermoplastic, the the bicycle symbol with arrows. And that is to inform the driver that there are bicycles that ride here. Um, I think one of the issues that we've got is visibility around curves. Nobody wants to hit a bicycle. Nobody does. But if you can't see them, you know, that that's where the danger that we're concerned about and and the traffic that's grown. I think one of the, and this is, this being just a a high level planning. Let's look at this document. Uh, one of the things that could be done is. Where you can get a wider shoulder and you put the wider shoulder in, that lets the bicycle get over here and people can pass. And then you get back in with traffic. In Asheville, we had people that commuted to work on bicycles. I can't imagine that. I would be dead. But people do and it's, they they commute to work on skateboards. But um here, is that really that feasible? You know, that's something else to balance out. Where where are we commuting to? Um, if you, if I worked at the school and I live on Schoolhouse, sure, that might be an an option. It would be great to have that. There are riders who prefer to ride with traffic. They would rather be in traffic than on a wider shoulder. Because at least in traffic, they don't worry about traffic coming up behind them because they're already there. The the ten foot separated bicycle path, of course, is preferred, but you know, like we're seeing, that that can't go everywhere. It's not feasible. It's not, not realistic to take someone's property, put a ten foot bike lane on a secondary roadway. So we can do it with wider shoulders, we can do it with sharrows, we can do it with additional signs. Hopefully, people pay attention to the signs and realize there's. There's bicyclists out here. But I think it's it's a future look at a future product, project, because. People are getting more into into riding bikes and personally, as a resident. I would consider riding my bike or getting a bike and riding it if I felt safe. And and on Schoolhouse, I don't feel safe. I don't, I used to walk on Schoolhouse. I don't do that anymore. I I even worry about turning into my driveway now. But, you know, that's just just the nature of the the roads we have, the roads we're building, the teens and twenties that. Anyway, anything, questions?
The the consultants use the term spot improvements with this, so if you look at seventy seven, where they have the key elements identified, A through K. And then that's shown on the actual plan map, you can she- see some of the areas of concern and so. Depending upon, again, if the state does a project on this road. We would look at those areas of concern and that's where a shoulder might be added in. Or if there's low visibility, a sign might be erected or something might be put on the pavement. Um, but it's 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 not a proposal for a shoulder for a small bike lane, the whole route.
I think it might just help by give a little bit more background on on the design project. So when when a, when the state has a project identifying the community, whether it's just a line on the map. From twenty years ago, and that project slowly makes its way through the review process over the years and it gets funded. One of the first things that they do in that process is what's called a sculpting meeting. And they meet and they have what's called a local officials meeting. And they'll invite local officials. So if it's in the town of Mills River, it would be people from the town, be representative of the county. Um, folks at the NPO and TAC and things of that nature. And we would sit down and we'd look at the route and we'd look at all the plans we have on the books and say. If you're looking at making improvements in North Mills, you know, our one from twenty twenty three identified. A shoulder where possible, guardrails where possible. And then we would, we would actually mark on the map where we think those things need to go. So. I don't want you to think that by having this plan adopted, even if it's adopted in its current form, that that is what is going to happen at some point in the future. Because things change and if this is adopted in twenty twenty three, but North Mills isn't improved for another twenty years. Uh, and the landscape might be entirely different. It might not make sense to have a shoulder out there. Maybe, maybe something has happened and it makes more sense with a bike path. Don't know that. Um, same thing with Latson, the the route that identified, which is the key. And then when it comes to actual designing of the roadway, that's where the local official input comes into play. And that's where we can have that conversation where the town is not on the south side of the road or east side of the road, it's only on the west side. Um, so this is a very high level planning document with with its main goal of identifying routes for improvement. Um, over the course of many, many years. Any questions about North Mills?
Am I allowed to ride my e-bike on this?
Absolutely.
That's a good consideration.
It's all right in the park.
Too young for an e-bike.
But no mopeds, right?
No.
They wouldn't allow mopeds on a bicycle path, would they?
No, we don't allow on our current route, anything that's motorized, right?
So e-box too?
So you're not addressing bike and stuff, that's probably, um. And there's a lot of debate in the proportion act field about whether e-bikes are appropriate enough. There's not really a need for them here, which is why I don't think we have a problem with them because we don't have the dollars for people to get them. But um a lot of places, there there's three classifications of e-bikes. The the bottom, like class one, class two, a lot of parks do allow them, the class three, but.
And just for my opinion, I think it needs to stay that way because pedal assist bikes can get pretty, pretty fast.
Um, okay, there's a few more here and then we've got, we've got lunch uh waiting, waiting for us. So North Mills to South Mills connector. Again, this would would be classified as str- strategic spot improvements. Where it is feasible and possible to do so, um including signage. Just making people aware of the fact that people on bikes do use these roads and for drivers to be aware. So number nine is one that was identified a few years ago as part of the Mills River Valley Trail discussion. It was not included in that plan. It was included in this plan. Um, this is a southern Mills River Valley Trail. Which would connect the the Mills River Valley Trail as we know it, which would go from. I mean, one ninety one to eighty out here up to the French Broad River. This would be the southern leg of that. And again, this would be a separated um ten foot wide multi-use path, so you'd have traffic. Uh, ru- uh lanes for vehicles, you'd have grass or or some other physical separation. You'd have a standalone bike path next to it. Obviously, this is a very expensive project. There was length. And the construction itself, you know, it's not always, not exactly flat, going between here and the county line. But there would be brickanning walls and and cut slopes and all those sorts of things. It would be, it would be, it would be a significant endeavor. But there would be brickanning walls and, and cut slopes and all those sorts of things. It would be, it would be, it would be a significant endeavor. Then lastly, on our top ten here, we've got the Oklawaha Greenway Connector. So reading it back to your point, this does actually follow the river for a certain amount of. Of time. Um to connect down to the Oklawaha. For reference there on that, that map you're looking at is um. My Amazon's not on there, but the new Amazon facility is just up the hill from there, then of course, the golf course is across the river. So those are the projects that, that have been identified. And again, I want to reiterate that these are high level planning alignments. We've not contacted, contacted property owners because we don't plan on building things next year. Um it could be fifteen years before one of these projects is implemented. And maybe the current owner doesn't have the interest, but a future owner might, or a future owner might buy it. You know, the Jeffers Townhomes are a good example. If there was a route identified through that property. And they're building a hundred and forty-eight units, I think it was. So I'm sure there'd be interest from some of those homeowners to be able to connect with a walking trail. So if the town had something on the books that would connect, say two eighty or, you know, Party back out to Jeffers or to Hooper Lane. That'd be a good example of working with a, a private owner to get something on the ground. But the, um again, it's not, it's not like we're going out building these things.
But also to that point, you, why would we want to partner with private businesses like the brewery? Cause they can change hands too.
They could.
Wouldn't align with them.
Yeah.
It's a double edged sword.
It is. Yeah, I mean, you could, things could always change hands, you're right, in the, in the future. And if we got something built between the elementary school and the, and the Banner Farm Road property, for example. And then in, in five years, that field between the brewery and the school turns into some sort of industrial user. That might not be the most attractive trail in the world, so you might be, you might be riding behind somebody that's making, I don't know, a lot of noise or. What's that? Yeah. Exactly. Not, not. Yeah. Maybe we plant some trees or bushes at that point.
Jeff, at your time at City Basketball, when these bike routes went in place, was there any more? Crime, any more, um did it bring any more situations to the city? To deal with?
That's a good question. Some of the greenways. Um the city's plan, and I, I was at the NPO. A day before yesterday and the city had a presentation on their plan to fill in the gaps. Where there's, there's no greenway or no sidewalk and how they're filling that in. And they're talking about lighting all of their greenways. If it's an established greenway, it's gonna have lights, probably solar powered. Uh so they don't have to run uh power lines out through there. Another thing I did was I rode around with police officers. They would take me out, we'd look for where we needed signs, et cetera. And some of the greenways, the one near Sales Bleachery is um of concern. They have. Uh need for enforcement out there. I'm not gonna say City of Asheville has crime there, cause. Yeah, I don't know what, but I do know the police officers, that was areas of concern, and that could be the case. Where it departs from the roadway with a screen of some sort in between the roadway, people like to do bad stuff where nobody's watching them. I know I would be concerned, I mean, you say I'm not a bodybuilder. For me to be out by myself away from where I can't be seen by the road, I would, I would be concerned, so. There, there's always that chance when you build something. Now, just four foot wide shoulder. Yeah.
Who does cleanup of these?
The, the Asheville, their parks, eh, their um. Eh I believe it's their public works department does that. And I believe they have a small sweeper that they can run on the trails. And when they build a bridge for one of their multi-use paths, it has to be able to handle an ambulance. It's got to be, and then the path itself is ten feet wide. At the entrances, they have removable bollards, so if law enforcement has to get back there or the ambulance, they pull that bollard up and go. So. They, and where they cross roadways, it's usually signed and it's set up as an actual, is a crossing. And they do have to sometimes sweep the, the sand, and that's where the vacuum trucks come in.
How about a leaf blower?
Um so the fourth chapter in this document is, is titled Programs and Policies, and this gets into some of the things that are not. Purely infrastructure in nature, um there's educational programs out there, the state does something. I think it's called Watch for Me and See, can't remember the details of that. Uh but basically educational campaigns that remind people that there are other people who use roadways other than bikes and trucks. Um to just be careful that there are people on the road. And then if we wanted to do something here in the park, we could certainly do that. Last section, implementation, which I think we talked a little bit about already. I'm happy to go over that. I'm seeing a lot of closed books. Um so I'm thinking maybe we can, we can wrap this up unless there are further questions about it. The last thing I'll say on it is planning work just saw it this week for the first time. The Parks Trails Advisory Committee is gonna see it later this month. And then um you all have it in front of you now, and we plan to bring it back to you later on this spring. Um once those other boys have had a chance to review it and offer their feedback. Um so it's not done, uh it's very much time for my public review and we welcome any of your input that you might have. And um. That's all that we have. You have any questions before we break for lunch? Alright.